All this special meeting of the Anchorage Assembly to order. It's August 1st, 2022 at 3:03 PM. Madam Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Ms. LaFrance?
Here.
Mr. Constant?
Here.
Ms. Allard?
Here.
Mr. Cross?
Here.
Mr. Dunbar?
Here.
Mr. Perez Verdia?
Here.
Mr. Peterson?
Present.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Here.
Mr. Rivera?
Present.
Mr. Salt?
Uh, here.
Mr. Boland?
Here.
Ms. Salatell?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, Madam Cross, would you please lead us in the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Perez Verdia, please repeat the hearing motion.
A land acknowledgement is a formal statement recognizing the indigenous people of a place. It is a public gesture of appreciation for the past and present indigenous stewardship of the lands that we now occupy. It is an actionable statement that marks our collective movement towards decolonization and equity. The Anchorage Assembly would like to acknowledge that we gather today on the traditional lands of the Tenina half-baskins. For thousands of years, the Tenina have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. It is with gratefulness and respect that we recognize the contributions, innovations, and contemporary perspectives of the upper clique in the Tenina.
Thank you, Mr. Perez Verdia. Before we move into the next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk, is it a motion to incorporate the AM?
Move to incorporate?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Perez Verdia has made a motion to incorporate. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. There is a motion and a second. Is there an objection to the incorporation of the motion? Or of the AM? I'm hearing no objection. That memorandum is incorporated, and we will get a number for it. Next, we have item 4A. What is the body? It's Assembly Action on Meral Veto Ordinance.
I apologize, Chair. I didn't come off me, and I wanted to object to the AM, please.
All right, thank you. We have an objection. Please, Clerk, take the roll. On the motion to incorporate.
Yes, Mr. Chair. On the motion to incorporate the AM.
May I ask a question? This is from point four.
Sure, go ahead.
I was just wondering if Ms. Allard, please, for the injection I mentioned earlier, if there's a reason for her consent. It's fine.
Okay, uh, this item is up for debate, so if you would like, Ms. Allard, you may speak to why.
I just disagree with the legal findings of it. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Oh, no, that's the different one. Thank you.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chair. Um, this is on the vote to, on the motion to incorporate the AM. Ms. LaFrance?
Yes.
Mr. Constant?
Yes.
Ms. Allard?
No.
Mr. Cross?
No.
Mr. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. Perez Verdia?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yep.
Mr. Salt?
No.
Mr. Boland?
Yes.
Ms. Salatell?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, the motion to incorporate has items nine to three.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we would have item 4A on the floor. Assembly action on Meral Veto Ordinance, Order 802022-60S. What's the body?
Mr. Chair, could you please read?
No, great.
Okay, hold on. I'm supposed to read the whole thing. Uh, Assembly action on Meral Veto Ordinance, Order 8022-60S, and Ordinance of the Anchorage Assembly, many an Anchorage municipal code 3.1.0, general provisions, and 27.2.0 supervisory boards, and section 2.7.0.03.0, and 29.10.06.0, to fulfill the requirement of Anchorage Municipal Charter, section 7.01B, that the Assembly by ordinance must establish specific procedures for removal of elected officials for breach of the public trust. Now, uh, what is the body?
Overing.
Second.
Okay, a motion to override has been made by Ms. Salatell. A second has been made by Mr. Perez Verdia. Before we dive into debate, I would like to offer the floor to Mr. Gates to briefly review with the public the memorandum that has been provided to us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so basically, the substance of the memorandum that we're distributing these four pages is still responsive to the mayor's veto message. And also, it's, um, some case law that has rules of construction for statutes and ordinances being courts introvert, introvert, uh, applied, and ordinance orders being changed as to some immunity, the court of Alaska, the Alaska Supreme Court has some rules set out. And, um, excuse me. I thought those were important. So what it was, was is, um, when you construe statute or ordinance, and, you know, the constitutionality of it is in doubt. A court will try and incorporate it to solve doubts in favor of constitutionality. Now, of course, whether it's make a career, or a court negating legal matters, legal questions, legal questions as to laws, legality, and its application in the states. And, of course, of course, are charged duty to analyze and solve the first constitutional challenges. Some constitution didn't find it that way. But not just because there's one possible interpretation that the ordinance is unconstitutional, or one possible meaning of it, this way, some constitution, where there's a whole number of ways to be, and by ordinance, and it does require release constitution. Even part of that constitution is a one possible meaning. And so that's one of the rules of the law. Another one is, um, and I guess the first one is, uh, in the memorandum, uh, bottom of page two, uh, I've tried to describe this one. Another one is, uh, when you have an ordinance or statute, and, uh, whenever possible, in trouble each year, we call it that they're part of the whole, in a homeless hole, let's say there's complex this one in that section, in this section. And I think that, you know, if you have an empty piece of legislation, you'll find some consistency throughout. But if we're construed to determine this, and it makes sense, the courts would do that. They would do that every time the courts slap down, scream, let's get him from the bench, and then finding a legal question of something's out, or not, they have these rules to do that. And so, um, the other parts of the memorandum, just to address some of these specific points in the mayor's veto message, such as, uh, and there's sunrise in the, um, bullets of top page two. Uh, one is the system that simply is infinistically crossed the line with the, um, just making procedures for removal and going into substance by giving definition to what is a breach, breach of public trust. And, um, the charter does require the Assembly to create procedures for removal, but it doesn't say that the Assembly cannot define what it means to breach of public trust. And that's what we put here in history, what the charter requires. And in home municipalities, the Assembly is with, um, legislative powers, they have other legislative powers, not particularly by the charter. In some of the states, statute, they would preempt, um, getting the Assembly from enacting something, and it's clear and expressed, and says the Assembly may not enact sales tax and alcohol, for example, we couldn't do it. Fortunately, we can, and that's why we have them. Um, and here our charter says, it says shall enact procedures, but that's a permissive condition. It's requiring it to enact procedures for removal. There's nothing there that says the Assembly cannot. Um, and for the substance, if they already have the, uh, here, and enact, I guess, definition of what breach of public trust means, uh, that can go on from case law as well. So, um, the basic point is, is everything the Assembly did in this ordinance, that list of those grounds that constitute breach of public trust, you know, definitely the conclusion is there, the Assembly is authorized to do so. The mayor's veto message was, we're not authorized to do so. We can't need some of those grounds, which can, it is known, this doesn't mean, and that's what we put in the side. But, um, the veto message was, the Assembly's not even authorized to make this list for constitutional grounds, and that's not really the case at all through the way of municipal home rule, powers of construe in the state of Alaska. Uh, another was, uh, moving this question from the Assembly members, and, uh, that's the fact that's, you know, we see that as the case here. So basically, um, oh, excuse me. And one other point was, uh, treating different elected officials differently. And I think the mayor's veto message was partly about municipal authority, not being able to determine the proficiency of an accusation document for breach of public trust, probably the mayor. And, uh, so that identity protection, municipal authority, into it for the other degree, can rules elected officials. But protection allows you to treat dissimilar parties who persons differently, and this is dissimilar with municipal authority. When municipal authority is the mayor's appointee, it serves at the pleasure of the mayor, and that relationship doesn't exist because the other elected officials, school board members, Assembly members, or supervisory board members. So that's very significant dissimilarity. And while that process is a little different for the mayor, but it's different because it's intended to be fair and impartial, new sufficiency review. Um, I hope that summarizes most of the points in the memorandum.
Thank you, Mr. Gates. Uh, first in the queue, I have Ms. Salatell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I wanted to speak to the points that I was hoping to debate the night that we debated the item, or we tried to debate the item. So, as I said, um, when the item came before us, and I think it's still really important to have as part of the legislative record, is that this item isn't about any particular person. This is setting a process and procedure, one that applies to all of the elected officials, um, named under the code. Additionally, it was amended, um, at my impetus to make that process really align with the gravity in which this process should be undertaken. Um, you know, if you think about the corollary instances, um, when we introduce an item, for instance, it takes three numbers to introduce. Or if you wanted to initiate a recall petition, it takes 10 signatures. So it's always, so it's already in this ordinance, a higher threshold in order to even introduce the concept, one that shouldn't be done unless votes are really dark sure, and the allegations are extremely serious. Um, this procedure, like recall and other instances where you're trying to move, remove an elected official, are very disruptive. Um, but can be necessary in certain instances. Raising the evidentiary standard to, um, clarifying existing evidence, I think, puts more weight in this process. Um, it conveys to the hearing officer how serious, uh, the process is, um, the high standard of evidence in which that hearing officer needs to make his or her findings. Um, and then only through written findings, or, and like a good task showing, can those findings be rejected by the supermajority of the Assembly or the deciding body. So I think overall, this is a fair process. It's one that conveys the gravity of the situation, should it ever be invoked against any elected official. Um, and I think it's really important to make a record of that, given the rhetoric around this item, uh, which, in my mind, was never about any person. It was a set of procedures for elected, elected officials in the municipality. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Cross?
Thank you, and, um, and I appreciate that. Uh, removing that would be about any specific person, I guess. And I also wanted to speak on this, particularly after the amendments that we made, um, before the question was called and eliminated our opportunity to speak during the last assembly. But, um, you know, the, I guess, the significant differences I see is that we are removing the head of the executive branch. Um, whereas if you're applying the same standard where we would do this to only one Assembly member, meaning the Assembly would still function, it wouldn't be a, you realize that if we remove the, whatever mayor it is, that even if you stick in a temporary one, that individual could come in and lay off staff or create, uh, you know, a lot of discord in a very short period of time, just depending on what that looks like. So, one is, I think there's a difference between the school board and the Assembly, because we're talking about one individual, not the entire head of the department. Um, and then the public trust, I think the public is the one who would speak to what that public trust looks like, not the Assembly. I would say that sometimes the Assembly does things that are in violation of the public trust, but somehow we manage to keep going. But also, you say, we, we, we look at it, and what I'm noticing here is we have the right to overrule the hearing officer. So you're saying that there's checks and balances, but then we have a right to vote, and the Assembly can overrule the hearing officer. So even if a neutral third party says they don't vote it, the same supermajority could come in and tell the hearing officer, well, we don't agree, we're going to proceed anyway. And then finally, that, those individuals who can have the power to overrule the hearing officer, then they go and put in somebody that they've handpicked, the people who removed that mayor, or whatever mayor, can then assert their own person that they've handpicked for that role, rather than say a lieutenant governor. So I have issues with the, uh, I have issues with the ability to overrule the hearing officers. I have the issues with the Assembly then sticking whatever individual in it not being lieutenant governor. I think, I think if we were eliminate, or there was corrections in this, that the people who removed the mayor were not the ones who picked who his replacement was, if it was the voters and it was predetermined, or we put this off until we had a position role, like a lieutenant of mayor, or a vice mayor, or whatever that looks like, I'd be way more on board. But I see a direct conflict of interest that the people who remove them are the people who can stick their own person in there, and I don't think that's correct. So that's my main concern. Has nothing to do with who's in that seat. Thank you.
Ms. Allard?
Thank you, Chair. My, um, I appreciate everybody's thoughts on this. A couple administrations, remember the Burke, Burkeowitz administration, a mayor Burkeowitz had resigned, and if this was such an important issue, we would have been committed to that thing. To think that this has nothing to do with, um, political aspects of, um, what's happening in our city, I would, I would venture to disagree. The other thing I would like to say is, um, we really need to heat on this carefully, and we, we just had a court ruling in favor of the mayor that there is a separation between executive and legislative branch. So, thank you, Chair, that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Bird?
Thank you, through the chair. And this is not the, the place for a legal argument. Um, I did have a chance to read Mr. Gates's memo. It's very well researched. Uh, I wanted to address a couple of things to the Assembly, just as a matter of advice from the municipal attorney's office regarding, uh, Mr. Gates's memo. Number one, uh, Mr. Gates already brought up a point about constitutional interpretation. He's exactly right. A court will try and construe things narrowly to keep the validity of the statute, but it will also employ the, the rule of severability, which means that if there is something that is somewhat unconstitutional, that portion of the statute may be invalidated, while the rest of it, that is not constitutionally suspect, would remain valid. I suspect that in the, the recent ruling from the court in the, um, the Bronson versus Assembly case, that's probably what we'll see. There will be, um, severability applied through the equity officer ordinance. The other thing I wanted to address was, um, in the memo, Mr. Gates mentioned a cleanup ordinance. Um, it sounds like that's something that's been in past practice. If the Assembly does want to address some of the technical, um, issues that could be here with cleanup ordinance, I would encourage the Assembly to consider specifically naming who the accuser is that delivers the document to, the initial document to the municipal clerk. And the reason for that is, previous vote was pretty clear that for the removal of an Assembly member or a school board member, it was a two-thirds vote, and it was from the school board or from the Assembly going through the municipal clerk. As it's currently drafted right now, it's unclear who the accuser can be and who delivers the accusation document. Um, so again, that's something to address in cleanup ordinance. The other thing, um, and this, I'm, I'm going to try and stay away from legal argument. I just want to point out, um, the, the provision that allows, only in the case of the mayor, for the Assembly to pick, uh, an impartial attorney, rather than somebody from the municipal attorney's office. Just be aware that, um, that same argument could be used for when the, an Assembly member himself or herself is, is accused of removal, and you have it going through the municipal clerk. And I, I just want to bring it to everybody's attention that we're still litigating over fees in the Jones versus Biggs case, which is, my office took a, a very reasonable approach to interpreting official misconduct, but the Superior Court disagreed, and then the Alaska Supreme Court disagreed. So we're still litigating over attorney's fees in that case, because we did not come out on winning it. So, um, again, just words to the wise about what to consider if this comes up as a cleanup ordinance. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Bird. I would ask for a motion to extend the meeting by 15 minutes, please.
Move to extend the meeting by 15 minutes.
Moved by Mr. Perez Verdia. Seconded by Mr. Cross. Is there an objection? Hearing on the meeting is extended by 15 minutes. Next, in the queue, I have Mr. Salt. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Perez Verdia was next.
Oh, thank you. Just a couple of points. I think, um, others have hit, um, most of the points that I had, but just to, um, it, it may be obvious, but just want to remind everyone to the record that each Assembly member is elected to their position by, um, the majority of, of, um, voters who voted in that election, um, in their area. And so, uh, these positions are representative of, uh, the people of Anchorage. Second, that, um, that this does not establish the right, uh, for the Assembly to remove, um, an elected official. It simply creates the, the procedures to do so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, through the chair. So, one, I, I agree with Mr. Cross's sentiment, and I, I also sort of agree with Mr. Perez Verdia. We are elected, however, we should all take notice that we have less than 50% participation in any of our races, and we went by 50%. So, uh, so that's a problem for all of us in Anchorage, the whole, as far as not being engaged. What I'm wondering, I want to point out, is we've seen in the past several years several recall initiatives, and none of those passed, like, among the, the ballot. So should the Assembly have chosen to move, and a move of Assembly number to a breach of trust in those, any of those circumstances, we clearly would have been wrong. So I, I have concern that us being judge and jury, uh, about what is breach of public trust, we may not have been correct, and the public may still trust that person, wish for that person to remain, even though we may feel otherwise. Thank you.
So I have a couple of comments. Many people asked, why did you start this project? I heard at least three meetings after it was introduced by the chief executive of this city that I was attempting a coup, and I had overstepped my bounds. The day that I decided this project was essential was the day in October, when a member of the administration attempted to turn off the public feed. Ms. Clark, you are warned. The second thing they did at that meeting was to dismiss security. And the third thing that they did at that meeting was told APD to stand down. And I had witnessed the staff of this administration rallying people in an angry crowd. When the mayor states that I am attempting a coup with this ordinance by implementing Charter Session 7.01B, I reflect back on that night. I have one word of caution that was unable to put into the record at the meeting, because supporters of the mayor were unwilling to follow the rules of order and be so long in the chamber to allow the business of the people to continue. And so I will say this now. My caution is to future assemblies, to future municipal attorneys or other attorneys who may be required, should this question arise, to future hearing officers, and ultimately, to future Superior Court judges and to the Supreme Court of the state of Alaska, should this come before you. No cause should ever be used that does not sufficiently rise to the level of breach of the public trust. This should not be, as has been threatened by the supporters of the mayor, used against future members of progressive assemblies for petty matters. If a member of a body should drop a municipal cellphone and crack its screen, that is not the kind of destruction of municipal property that should rise to the level of question. Shall an elected official be removed? But it should in fact be a pattern of behavior that rises to the level of abuse that regular people would look and ask, how could this person do such a thing? That it's unconscionable that that action should have taken place. So my message, again, to those future assemblies and attorneys and hearing officers and judges is, please don't allow this to be used in a way that is simply a political act, but instead, for what it is intended, for when an elected official of this municipality does something so bad that it is time that they should be removed. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so my, my comments are brief, and I wasn't going to speak, but the, um, comments from my colleagues from South Anchorage, I think prompted me, because this was a continual theme that we heard during the, um, public testimony, and I just really want to address it. You know, frankly, I, I think it would be farcical if any of my colleagues would start proceedings through to have removed myself or Ms. Salatell for the reasons that were in the recall. I don't think it would hold muster at all. I don't think it would get through the accusation documents, because the proceedings that we have in code, and that we strengthened through this ordinance, they are much stronger and require a real and actual breach of the public trust, and go through a very, uh, I think, a good and legal process to determine that. So I'm going to ask people to please stop conflating these two very different processes, which are the recall and this breach of the public trust process that's in our code and required by Charter. They're two very different things. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, last comments for me before we proceed to vote. I had a nice conversation with a member of the administration today. The theme of that conversation was, where do we go from here? And I think that that's something that each and every one of us should contemplate. You know, we've had a very difficult interaction between the two branches of government for the last year. There's been a, a practice that has become status quo, that items are brought to the Assembly at the last minute without giving proper time for contemplation and deliberation, and then we're being told, you must act, because if you don't act, something terrible will happen. But then you have a number of other department directors who've decided they're going to actually brief us with information in advance, so we can make a deliberate decision, as is our purpose. And I am not sure how to bridge the divide that has grown between the two branches of government. But I can say simply the act of that question by a member of the administration was an act of good faith, and one that I am actively exploring right now. Because this ordinance is not intended to be implemented. It is intended to be on the books, should the need arise. With that, I would ask the Clerk to proceed to the vote.
With that, I would ask the clerk to proceed to the vote. Question is, shall the veto be overridden?
Ms. LaFrance?
Yes.
Mr. Constant?
Yes.
Ms. Allard?
No.
Mr. Cross?
No.
Mr. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. Presverdea?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Mr. Salt?
No.
Mr. Boland?
Yes.
Ms. Salatell?
Yes.
The vote is nine to three to override the veto.
On a vote of nine to three, the assembly has overridden the veto of ABO 2022-60S. Next on our agenda, audience participation, please come forward in three minutes. Please state your name or pretend to phone.
Where would you like us to stand?
We probably need a microphone.
I probably won't, Mr. Constant, you know that.
It's, it's not for you, though, it's for the record. And so the microphone is, make sure that folks on the phone and I'll start in here.
Thanks. Okay. Hattie, are we ready for my three minutes? Thank you. I appreciate all you guys as much as I possibly can some days. So, let's talk about a few things here. Oh, I'm sorry, Noria Clark for the record, November 11, 2021. Let's talk about breach of public trust. If we're really going to talk about that, where do the citizens get to start saying something about this? So instead of you guys deciding, shouldn't we decide if there's a breach of public trust? I mean, wouldn't that be the best option? The citizens are the ones who should decide, because so far, I feel like there's quite a bit of breach of public trust. And I'm not saying that I'm on the mayor's side, and I'm certainly not on your guys' side. I'm on the side of all the constituents in, in Anchorage. At this point, I don't agree with anybody to a certain point. I want you guys to do your jobs, but I shouldn't have to show up at 3:00 in the afternoon for a special session. So let's go past other things here. How does the, the public actually pass this hurdle? When does the public get to speak about this? When does the public get to have the option? When do we get to vote? Isn't it up to the public? You work for us. I know that you guys don't really remember that sometimes, but you actually do. And I have to say, there's a lot of things that I'm not comfortable with right now in this city, and I haven't been for the last eight years. And I know, because I've been seeing Constant and Forrest, I've been seeing you guys for years. And you know what? I know that you guys work hard on certain things, so I can be as polite as I possibly can. However, at the end of the day, I do feel a breach of public trust. When do I get to decide where the breach of public trust actually comes in? I am the voter, we are the people. It's not just up to you guys. We put you in office, and allegedly you say this. But here's the thing, is that so far, from what I've heard, dash 60 has actually gone in the way of the mayor's favor. We go to commit, why is there not a recall? And I'm not saying we need to do all these recalls, we keep wasting a bunch of money. We need to stop all this wasting money. When are we going to start working for the people? We have so much other stuff to do besides fight amongst each other and try and push each other out of office. I don't care anymore who's in office, just get your job done. It's not that hard. It's a very simple concept, right? We voted you in, you guys voted yourselves a race, you guys voted yourselves, now that you get to make a decision about whom is going to be the person who represents us, when we already chose, we chose that. So when, when do we get to choose again with citizens? Why are we not holding this at a regular assembly meeting? How come the citizens are not involved in this? Anybody who wants to participate should have an open option to do that. Yet we keep seeing consistently that you cut off the ability of the public to say what they want to say. And you know what, the catch me outside thing, and I love all of the things that you guys say about me on Twitter, because I think it's hilarious, because I don't have a Twitter, but people send them to me. Catch me outside is a joke, just like how you guys said the Taylor Swift thing.
All right, that's your three minutes.
Yep, oh, of course it is. Well, you know what, I appreciate all you guys' time. Thank you, please try and make good decisions in this world. Please just try and fight for your citizens. Thank you.
And also, the speaker, three minutes, and on it all. Seeing here are none, we will move on to audience, or excuse me, assembly member comments. We'll start with the folks on the phone. Mr. Salt?
No, I'm good, thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no comment.
Thank you, Ms. Quinn-Davidson?
No comments, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no comments.
Ms. Allard?
No, thank you, Chair.
Ms. Salatell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no comment.
Ms. LaFrance?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no comment.
Mr. Presverdea?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no comments.
Mr. Boland?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no comments.
Mr. Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I just had a question. When you were, just point of order, was, when you were speaking on behalf, should you pass the gavel to Dunbar, or?
If it's contentious.
All right, well, I appreciate it, and no other comments, thank you.
The way I tend to approach that is, if it feels like it's becoming contentious, I hand the gavel over. Right, then I don't get vacation and kind of back and forth. But a member, the, the chair is allowed to make comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, no comment.
I would just note that we have parking issues out. There are some kind of big construction projects, so a couple of members were asked to participate in home. Otherwise, at this point, no comments, and there are two more motions to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Your second.